I call the meeting to order of the Wilmington City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone that is here with us this evening and all those who are watching this at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember Clifford Barnett to do our invocation if everyone will stand and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. Clifford?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for another opportunity to serve you as we serve the citizens here at Wilmington. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your wisdom. We pray, God, that we not get weary in our well-doing. I received an email from one of my parishioners, and she says, "Dear pastor, I'm praying for you as you prepare for the city council meeting, realizing that times are so different from the day you first took the oath of office. But what has not changed is, God, we serve. So go do the work you have been assigned to do." So that's our assignment tonight, God, that we do what you have assigned us to do. Grant us wisdom to do those things that will put a smile on your face and make our city a better place to live. For it's in His name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just wanted to congratulate Tony Cottle, who is now the manager for the city of Wilmington. That matter was taken care of this morning, and I just want to say congratulations. I know you've been here for 12 years, so I know you're not a meat farmer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your and your fellow councilmembers' confidence in my support.
Appreciate it. Thank you. First presentation this evening is an update on single-use plastics' impact on community and the city's operations. At this time, I'd like to call on David Ingram, who's our sustainability manager. David, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having us this evening. So in front of you tonight is a resolution to support and promote the reduction of single-use plastic waste in our city, as well as the commendation and support of businesses participating in the Ocean Friendly Establishment Program. While the city has a long history of being a good steward of our coastal environment, we do recognize that plastic film and single-use plastics represent a contamination in our local environment, as well as our waste stream. Our clean coastal environment comes from the impacts from these plastics in our local waste stream. And the plastic bags, while they are recyclable, they tend to get recycled in our, either in our curbside recycling or in locations that are not the proper place to have those items dropped off. So, and when that happens, they actually impede our recycling process amid our local MRF. They clog the system out there and cause the machinery to be shut down, cause delays in that, and cause costs to increase for our recycling efforts. This plastic film and bags, as well as straws, represent an enormous impact to our local waterways. When they don't make it into our recycling or waste stream, they break down into small fragments that not only float on the surface of our waters, but actually can sink down to the bottom and be very difficult to ever remove from the environment. So with this resolution, we hope that the city council will encourage all citizens to reduce the use of single-use plastic shopping bags through their use of reusable bags or other alternatives. Through a grant program this year, we were able to purchase a number of these 100% recyclable, they're actually a paper, washable paper product that are very reusable. I've left one of these for each of you tonight for you to take home.
Appreciate that.
Also, we also encourage all citizens to recycle plastic bags and film properly at local retail drop-off sites. There's a website that citizens can go to, which we have on our city department recycling page, where they can find out where those locations are around the city, as well as encouraging local businesses and individuals to participate in the Ocean Friendly Establishment Program. My great friend and colleague here, Bonnie Monteleone, will tell us a little bit more about that program, as well as we're going to have city staff seek opportunities to reduce single-use plastics in our city services, our facilities, and events. So with that, I'd like to hand it off to Bonnie for a short presentation.
Thank you, David, and thank you, City Council, for having me today. I'm so incredibly impressed with the movements that are happening in our city, and I think that if you don't know, you're about to learn. So I'm asking you to support the Wilmington Resolution to promote the reduction of plastic waste in our city and the commendation and support of businesses participating in our ocean-friendly establishments. You may not know what that is, and I'm going to teach you. So what is Plastic Ocean Project? Well, it's actually a nonprofit that came out of UNCW. We have a worldwide reputation for the work that we do, and our modus operandi is education through research, outreach through art, and solutions through collaboration. So when I talk about research, we're getting kids as young as fifth grade in our research labs. They're learning how to use strong instrumentation where they can learn about chemistry, how to do research projects, and then something as relevant as plastic in their environment, which, by the way, kids really care about. Outreach through art, we need the artists, we need the storytellers. You know, we can do all the science in the world, but it really is our artists that best communicate the problems that are happening in our environment, as well as the good things. And then solutions through collaboration. I'm going to just give you one example, but there's many in this town, and we are so lucky to live in a place that's so open to being progressive and creating the changes that need to happen. And so the picture that I have up right now is of Ginger Taylor. Ginger Taylor is one of the sea turtle walkers. She walks Wrightsville Beach, and about 10 years ago, she noticed that there's straws kept showing up on the beach, and she just thought, like, why? Why straws? Why are they found on Wrightsville Beach? And so she came up with this idea that if we started an ocean-friendly establishment, we could maybe get restaurants to just commit to not giving out straws, but only giving them out upon request. And with that began an incredible committee that has done so much good in our community, and I'm going to show you some of that. So the Ocean Friendly Establishment, or also known as OFE, is a community-based certification earned by businesses that reduce their use of plastic and seek out sustainable options to serving their community. The OFE initiative, launched in 2015, started locally, right here, and now we have 250 certified locations across the country. That's an example of the power of one, right here from Wilmington. Now, I chose these three images for very specific reasons. When Ginger started this project, she needed some help, so Plastic Ocean Project stepped up and said, you know, maybe we can help get the word out about your idea of OFEs. And with that came Surf Rider. Well, then Surf Rider had to step down, so the North Carolina Aquarium at Four Fishers stepped up, and with that came a whole host of wonderful thinkers and ways to be innovative about the plastic problem, especially from food industry, but also from other initiatives. Now, I chose these three pictures because you can see that some of them are holding up signs for $1,000. Well, this team actually recognized that with COVID, these restaurants and businesses had to pay a lot more for single-use gloves, for a lot of single-use packaging, so they thought they could help them commit to using biodegradable products, which are much more expensive, by offering them grants. So the aquarium was able to acquire a $5,000 grant, Plastic Ocean Project threw in two more thousand, and we gave away $7,000 in grants to seven recipients. Now, there's also a picture with a car, and that was a, an electric car that Plastic Ocean Project was allowed to use to deliver these checks. And that was because Jeff Gordon Chevrolet has been helping a lot of people in this community, and this is just one more awesome example. Now, the image in the middle is the certificate that I mentioned that these OFEs received. This art was done by a local artist by the name of Kim Beller, and you can also notice that it says, "North Carolina Coastal Federation." Just another example that it doesn't have to be restaurants and businesses, it also can be schools and nonprofits. So this idea that Ginger Taylor came up with then flourished because restaurants and businesses started to recognize that, hey, if I'm not giving out straws, I'm saving money, right? So all of a sudden, it's impacting their bottom line, and things are getting better, so they started thinking of other ways that they could reduce their use of waste and also encourage their people that visited their restaurants and businesses. And so the committee came up with this program, a five-star program, because some of them are able to do more than others, while some just can't. So this is a way of rewarding those that are coming up with solutions. Now, you might notice on the last one, it says, "Provides discounts or incentives for customers who bring reusable cups, mugs, or bags." We're going to talk about plastic bags. So why would we target the reduction of single-use plastic bags in this resolution? Well, Americans use over 1 billion plastic bags a year. That equals 12 million barrels of oil. I mean, it's just such a waste of essential or a resource. Americans use about an average of 365 bags per year, and unfortunately, though they can be recycled, like David had mentioned, oftentimes they're not. These chemicals leach out from the plastic bags, and they are starting to have an impact on the organisms in the ocean that photosynthesize. That means that those organisms that are turning our CO2 into oxygen are now unfortunately being compromised because of plastics. And then there are, there was 1.9 million grocery bags in the international coastal cleanup in 2018. So again, these are getting lost in the environment and wreaking havoc on our marine life. So even when we dispose of them properly, so this was actually a municipality truck that I was behind, that I was watching all kinds of debris fly out of, including styrofoam, cardboard, but a lot of plastic bags. So even when we try to do the right thing, unfortunately, they get lost in the environment. So this is a really great depiction of our planet. If you look at it, and why this issue matters is because our planet is over 70% water, and this really helps us understand that anything that ends up in the environment has the potential of getting into storm drains, into our rivers, and rivers lead to rivers that lead to the ocean. Now, what I have up here is also a picture of a couple of samples of the work that we're doing with NC State. So they're doing surface samples now in rivers, and this is using a microscope to look at particles down to between 500 and 900 micron. And you can see that these plastic bags are now breaking down to that particular size where they can be accidentally ingested by very small organisms. So here's another reason why people will say, well, I don't see that many plastic bags in the environment, and that's because the wind can pick them up, and again, push them down storm drains or end up in rivers, and they are ending up off our coast. So these plastic bags and films only float for a small while, and once the air bubbles are out of them, they don't sink to the bottom, they hang in the water column. So if you were on a boat, you could ride right over this, and you'd never know that there was that much plastic below the surface. And this is why this is really important, because not only do we have the river close to us, but we also have the ocean. So we have two ways for these plastics to vector into our water. So with Plastic Ocean Project research, we not only get students in the lab, but we also get them out in the field. We're looking at fish habitats, which unfortunately, we do find a lot of plastics, especially in sargassum. So sargassum is a known essential fish habitat. It is actually protected by law, and yet these plastics are accumulating in the sargassum, giving the animals a higher probability of either getting entangled or ingesting plastics. In the other image, you can see work that we've done at looking at plankton. So we used fluorescent plastics in order to see if the plankton would ingest plastics, and indeed, these organisms do eat plastic. So in other words, plastic is being ingested from plankton, which is the smallest animal on the planet, all the way up to blue whales. So you can see I have this bottle of water, like, looks pretty clean, doesn't it? I mean, you cannot really see any particles floating around in it. This is another research project that we're doing with 15 river keepers here in North Carolina, and we have analyzed 10 of these nine-milliliter bottles of water, and we can find anywhere from 24 to 256 positively identified polymers, plastic polymers or man-made polymers, thanks to this instrument. Can you imagine that there's plastic in these bottles? This is how serious this problem is, and this is why we have to step up. We have to keep figuring out ways that we can reduce our use of plastic, because this is only going to get worse. One more thing to mention about plastic, especially when it's in the environment, is that it does release methane. So when we talk about greenhouse gases, methane is 22 times more potent than CO2. So here's a little test that we did in our lab. We looked at plastics at 72 degrees Fahrenheit, and about two parts per million were released of methane. When we exposed it to 90 degrees Fahrenheit, which we know we have some pretty hot days here, it went up to 53 parts per million. So there's no question that these plastics are also leaching out methane. So let's talk about some positive things right now. We are incredibly privileged in this town because we do have legislators that care about what's going on in the environment. In fact, the city of Wilmington has worked with a lot of local nonprofits, and I'm just going to name a few. Cape Fear River Watch, Keep New Hanover County Beautiful, Alliance for Cape Fear Trees. So we're getting out in the environment, we're working together, and we're picking up a lot of trash. And together, we are now removing what doesn't belong and putting back what does. The city of Wilmington has their 1,739 trees that they're going to be planting, and so Plastic Ocean Project also have our Trees for Trash campaign, of which we have invested in the 1,739 trees that are going to be planted, because we recognize we have to put back nature the way we found it. And one more thing that I'll mention that's happening positive, because I love ending on a positive note, is the presentation that David Ingram just shared. Him and I had the privilege of working side by side during Jerry Day, and we were giving out these bags. Now, I will tell you that the city invested in really nice bags. You saw them. These aren't your cheap bags. They're beautiful, they're washable, and the more you wash them, the more leather they look, and they're actually a really nice item to walk around with. Plastic Ocean Project has sold them, and people absolutely love them. So I appreciate the extra mile that the city is going in trying to educate people on reducing their use of plastic, because sadly, in North Carolina, we cannot have a plastic bag bad. So in the end, I'd like to say, the real solution is, if we don't use it, we can't lose it, right? So this is just a picture of my students going up and cleaning up just this one spot in our river. We don't have to have those plastics in the river if we don't use them. Thank you.
Now, we say thank you, and I know that you've been a big collaborator with the project and working with the city on a lot of different initiatives, but I know that you've also helped us in working, you know, with the legislature, trying to get them to understand how important of an issue this is, not only for the coastal part of our state, but the entire state. And I know that we've been working also with the Merchants Association to get an understanding and to work with them to tell their, the people that they work with, that they have relationships with, to please do away with plastic bags, because this has been a big issue for us for many years. So I just want to say thank you on the collaboration. Thank you for helping us with the trees, with your efforts and your help. We've surpassed the 1,739, have gone now to over 4,000 trees that have been planted in the city of Wilmington, and I want to just thank you for your efforts and help in that planning. So y'all did a great job, and we want to continue that collaboration and get this thing done once and for all.
That's right. We're going to have one of the prettiest, cleanest, greenest cities. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our next item of business is our Consent Agenda Items 1 through 5. Are there any items that any councilmember would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council?
I want C3.
C3? Okay.
That was the one I wanted also.
Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda Items 1 through 5 excluding C3? We have a motion made by Councilmember Rabinbark, second by Councilmember Barnett. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Kevin Spears. Mr. Spears?
I just want us to be able to provide some clarity about this traffic program. That's all.
Okay. Do we have somebody here that can address that?
Dennis Vukinowitz, our traffic engineer, will be available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here to answer any questions you might have.
Just kind of go with Mr. Spears.
Yeah, just give us an overview of what's happening, just so the public can be informed.
Okay. We have a lot of, the citywide speed limit is 35 miles per hour, so we have a lot of neighborhood speeds, neighborhood streets that are posted.
Kind of muffled.
Oh, sorry. Can I take this off up here? Okay, sorry. The citywide speed limit is 35 miles per hour, but we have a lot of neighborhood speeds that are also posted at 35 miles per hour, and this gives an opportunity for an area to petition for their streets to be reduced to 25 miles per hour. So it's a, we're currently performing this process, just not in a, this formal of an application, so this policy would allow us to formalize the speed reduction request policy.
So people won't just wake up one day in the neighborhood, the speed limit is just being reduced to 25 miles per hour?
No, no. There's a lot of notice, they're required to get signatures from all of their, you know, majority of their neighbors. Signs would be posted out, you know, 25 days in advance of any change, and stuff like that, so.
Well, that was the part I was concerned about, is I don't want to make it difficult for them to do that, because in neighborhoods, that's where, I mean, that's where children are playing, riding their bikes, people are walking, and a lot of these neighborhoods don't have sidewalks, they have to be on the street. So up to now, they would come and ask the city, did the city go out and do a petition? Or did, were we requiring them to do a petition?
Yes.
Okay. And it also says in the resolution that we define where that petition signatures have to come from. If you've got a spine going through a neighborhood, and that's where you want, and that's where the speeding is, do they have to go off on all of the tributaries feeding into that spine to get signatures? I just don't want it to become a difficult process.
Sure. We, what we're shooting for is for area-wide speed limits, so once you leave that spine and enter an area where there's primarily one way in or one way out, those are the areas that we're really focusing on reducing the speed limits on those neighborhood streets that, the, anything that's classified as a minor collector or under are the streets that are part of this petition policy.
I understand that. I mean, if, for example, Greenville Luke Road, you wouldn't be getting petition signatures off of that, but Wellesley or, those are the ones where you would be focused on.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, but that's a question. Is it every one of the arteries that go off of that, not the main road, Greenville, but let's say Head Road, for example, so you're getting everybody that's going to have to use that road to get to Greenville, they're going to be asked to sign a petition?
They would be their own petition for, because those are mainly just dead-end streets, you know, or no-outlet streets.
Well, let's just say another neighborhood where they're not, where they're looped, but you're just talking about, what, two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. With that, okay, I move item C3.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion made by Councilmember Rabinbark, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. Brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information. We have four speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. First speaker is Jen Johnson, who will be speaking to us about the nondiscrimination ordinance. Ms. Johnson?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sappho and City Councilmembers. My name is Jen Johnson, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Relations Advisory Committee, fondly known as C-RAC. And first of all, I'd like to just recognize that all of us who are here in the room this evening are here because we care deeply for Wilmington, and we're committed to the continued growth of our city. Our city is comprised of beautifully diverse individuals who all have something to contribute to the greater good of our community. We are all human beings who long to be happy and at peace. We all long to have equal protections from discrimination. I love Wilmington, and I also want to live in a city whose policy wholeheartedly reflects the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Inclusive policymaking involves a commitment to the interests of all people, not just the interests of the dominant group, and it involves including people who are impacted by the policy in the policymaking process. It is past time for all residents of Wilmington to have their voices heard. If we are not familiar with the stories of discrimination that are happening in Wilmington on a regular basis, related to race, ethnicity, age, disability, gender identity, and sexual orientation, then we are out of touch with the people in our city. Stress from discrimination is real, it has traumatic effects, and it leads to health inequities. We cannot heal this until we acknowledge that these inequities exist in our city. We pride ourselves on building a more resilient community, yet the proposed ordinance keeps some of us striving toward resilience when it should support all of us to thrive. We cannot have it both ways. We cannot call ourselves an inclusive community if we continue to create policies that exclude some of us. We cannot create a resolution stating that our city does not tolerate discrimination if we have an ordinance that allows it to continue. We are either for diversity and inclusion, or we are not, and if we are for these values, we must have comprehensive policy in place that reflects this. Otherwise, we have a resolution on nondiscrimination without an ordinance in place to substantiate our good intentions, thus rendering it in some parts ineffective. I was appointed to the C-RAC as a representative of the business community of Wilmington. I've spoken with many business owners in the past few weeks in Wilmington who recognize that a more comprehensive nondiscrimination policy is good for business. I would encourage you to see this wisdom that now nine cities and three counties across North Carolina have embraced. People across the state and nation are tuned in to this decision as it unfolds. Around the world, businesses are leading the way in making diversity, equity, and inclusion a part of their culture for the good of their companies and for the good of society at large. Creating a comprehensive ordinance could attract more individuals, businesses, and corporations to our city. Will we be the city that rushes to pass an ordinance that was written quickly, that leaves too many gaps, and too many people unprotected? Or will we be the city that pauses and takes our time to create comprehensive protections for as many community members as possible? It's not too late to be more thoughtful and thorough. We urge you again to press pause and return to the table with a more comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinance. The development of any new policy is often accompanied by risk. We hope that you decide that prioritizing the well-being of all residents in Wilmington is worth the risk. As Maya Angelou said, "Everybody is worth everything." And to anyone here or there who needs to hear this, you are brave, strong, beautiful, inspiring, and loved, just as... inspiring, and loved just as you are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ms. Sonya Patrick, who'll be speaking to us about the Reverend Dr. Kirk, NC State Marker, eighteen ninety-eight observance. Ms. Patrick?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council for this opportunity. My name is Sonya Patrick. Among the many hats, I'm coming to you today as chair of the eighteen ninety-eight observance committee here in Wilmington, North Carolina. This fall, the eighteen ninety-eight massacre and coup d'etat observance committee will have our hundred and twenty-third awareness of the only forcible takeover of the constitutional elected government in our nation's history. On November tenth, eighteen ninety-eight, the elected Wilmington City Council was violently overthrown by a white supremacist group comprised of prominent community members. It is the only successful government takeover in the nation, in this, in the nations of the United States. The purpose of this committee, beyond commemorating this historic event, is to call attention to the scope of the destructive aftermath of Wilmington's black community. Through established fact, continued research, and community dialogue, we hope to move toward a more meaningful awareness of reconciliation. The eighteen ninety-eight committee consists of over forty local organizations of all races, religious backgrounds, and concerned citizens, past and present, public officials, community leaders, and clergy. On November tenth, among the many programs we're going to have this week, on November the tenth, we'll be recognizing Reverend Dr. J. Allen Kirk. Dr. J. Allen Kirk pastored as many as four historically Baptist churches that are still functioning today, including the Twelfth Street Baptist Church in Boston, Massachusetts. He is the only pastor with a written account of his personal experience of the eighteen ninety-eight massacre. The original copy is at UNC Chapel Hill University. There will be a state marker erected here in Wilmington, and we would appreciate the support of the mayor and city council, and we thank you for your interest that you have shown thus far. As an African American, it's very moving to see the community come together to bring awareness and promoting our mission to serve humanity through reconciliation, education, awareness of the eighteen ninety-eight massacre and coup d'etat. And also, we are making efforts to have the flag half-mask in memory of the victims of the eighteen ninety-eight massacre. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ms. Ashley Daniels, who'll be speaking to us about nondiscrimination ordinance. Ms. Daniels?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to speak briefly tonight about what is possible in the city of Wilmington. Just over a year ago, a good friend shared with me that some challenges that he was having at a job. He'd worked in close proximity with two young men who were casually in conversation, would use racial slurs. They would use these slurs in the, in the workplace, and would often do so in the company of my friend. He finally worked up the courage to tell his employer what was happening. He explained that this was not something that he should have to endure in a professional work environment. His employer listened patiently, and the next day, he called my friend into his office and explained that my friend was not a good fit for the job, and that his services would no longer be needed. You might ask what actions my friend took after that, or what happened to the employer, and the answer to that is nothing. Poor people can't afford attorneys, nor can they afford to be without work, so they go and find another job. I know it's possible for people in Wilmington to be discriminated against, not just my friend, but probably thousands of people. And I'm not referring to a discrepancy of whether or not to have dressed down Friday. I'm speaking about the violations of people's civil and human rights. I also know it's possible for the city to use its resources to protect the people who live, work, and play in the city. The reason I know this is possible is because none other cities in the state have done so, not by broad ordinances, but by robust and bold policy that communicates clearly who the city feels is worthy of protection and what the city will do to protect those demographics. Lastly, I was present at the last meeting when City Attorney John Joy expressed that he was unclear whether the city was authorized to prohibit private employers from discriminating against employees. I would like to offer that in the case of protecting people, it is preferable to ask forgiveness rather than permission, and nine cities have determined that this policy was worth taking a courageous rather than a comfortable lead for. Wilmington should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Caroline Moore Engage, who is LGBTQ Center for the Cape Fear Coast, will also be speaking to us about the nondiscrimination ordinance.
Good evening, good to see you all again. I'm Caroline Moore Engage, I'm the executive director of the LGBTQ Center of the Cape Fear Coast here in Wilmington. I'm here again to ask you to reconsider the nondiscrimination ordinance that's before you this evening for reasons echoed by the lovely speakers before me. The community has heard the concerns of city council and of the city attorney. We've also heard the input from the nine other cities and the additional counties who've passed a full comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinance, and so we still believe that this is possible for us, and still believe that it's the right thing to do. Unfortunately, these protections are necessary. A University of Chicago study revealed that more than one in three LGBTQ Americans faced discrimination last year. That number goes up to three in five for transgender individuals, and significantly higher for folks with disabilities or people of color. The experience of discrimination leads to numerous adverse consequences for someone's financial, mental, and physical well-being, all documented by health disparities, and these disparities are a focus of our local hospital, so I'd love to see the city join in the same level of protection and concern that the hospital has shown. All hardworking people, whether they're LGBTQ or have an Afro, should be able to work in the city of Wilmington. They should be protected from being fired for reasons that are not related to their job performance or their ability to do the work that's being asked of them. We're not alone in pushing for these protections. You know that twelve other jurisdictions have done so, including the employment piece, and I would just note that if all of those city and county attorneys agree that this is legally defensible, and the job of an attorney is to tell you what's legally defensible, then your job is also to tell us what's good and moral and what's right for the city to do tonight. So I had to tell you that changing the law overnight won't change the way that some of us are treated in the city of Wilmington, but it will be an important first step in protecting those of us who live, work, and play here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This concludes our public information segment. Our next segment is public hearings. I will announce that the following hearing was continued from council's August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Item PH one is an ordinance directing the housing inspected to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling at nine seventeen North Seventh Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article five, Chapter sixteen of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brian Renner, our chief code enforcement officer, will review this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. We're getting the presentation pulled up here in one moment, and there it is. So my name is Brian Renner, I'm chief code enforcement officer, for those of you who don't know me in the public. The house that we're looking at tonight is nine one seven North Seventh Street, and it's brought before city council as prescribed under section sixteen, two thirty-two, subsection D of the Code of Ordinances. So nine one seven North Seventh Street is a one thousand forty square foot single-family house. It's a vacant house. It's is kind of the epitome of what we'd call heir property. So the owners that we have listed are all lawful heirs of Louis Canty, all lawful heirs of Emma Tisdale, and possible interest to the heirs of Mye Scarborough. I do want to note that I did speak with one of the heirs of Mye Scarborough today, and I've had off and on conversations with her over the last week, and the family does plan on looking at demolishing this house within the timeframe, so just keep that in mind as we go through this. And she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she wanted me to explain that as well. So here's the front view of that. We started this case back in December of two thousand seventeen. It was a complaint from the Wilmington Police Department, and the house has been vacant since then. Here you'll see the, the front view of that house. Our case timeline, the inspection, as I said, December two thousand seventeen. We did take this to housing code hearing in September of two thousand nineteen, and we provided a timeline to January twenty twenty for that to get resolved. As you can see, it's been a year since that order expired, and nothing has significantly changed until very recently, when we moved to condemn the house. For the order, we see that the tax value of the structure is twenty-nine thousand, this is based on a twenty twenty tax value when we took this to hearing. Our estimated cost of rehab is seventy-eight thousand, and, which makes it two hundred and sixty-three percent dilapidated, which would author, authorize demolition, because it's over that fifty percent threshold. Minimum housing code sections, those are outlined in the findings of fact that you have, but two twenty-nine residential buildings unfit, and then the other things you see there. So here are some photos, just so you know what it looks like. Since we took this to hearing, the house had been gutted, because there were some investors that were looking at purchasing the property, but all that fell through when they weren't able to get all the heir signatures. So keeping that in mind as we look at this, it is different from the findings of fact that you received, because it has since changed. Basically, the, the house is gutted, and that's the significant difference, and increased deterioration on the inside. If we can see, you know, somebody had also put a tarp on the roof to try to limit some of the water intrusion. I believe it might, it might have been a neighbor, but... I can see the rotten decay on the roof and the siding, the rear, all that trash and garbage has since been abated by a city contractor. I can see the siding rotting, the framing rotting. And here's the inside, the floor is very unstable, and the roof, it has quite a few holes in it. Here we see that. We do have some indication that somebody was, was coming and going from inside this building, but it is secure at the moment. And here you see that, that floor completely gone. Hole in the roof. So as I said, we, we did speak with a member of the family today, I spoke with her again, and their plan right now is to, to pay off the taxes that are due, and the taxes that are due are about twenty-five hundred right now. So then they're going to look forward with demolition of the structure and keeping the land of the family is their game plan right now, and they think they can do that within our, our ninety-day timeframe that, that we're suggesting. So our request is ten days, that gives us the authority to keep the dwelling secure, because as I had mentioned, it appeared someone was coming and going from the property at one point. The structure is, as I said, recently cleaned up underneath our public nuisance ordinance, and we're requesting that the heirs repair or demolish and remove the dwelling within ninety days, given the extended dilapidation and decay. Due to the continued unsanitary and unsafe conditions that endanger the health and safety and general welfare of the community, and the failure by the heirs to make the necessary repairs thus far, we're recommending the approval of the ordinance to vacate, close, repair, or demolish. I'm here for any questions.
Ms. Renner?
What kind of math do you use to come up with two hundred and sixty-three percent dilapidation?
That would be the cost of the building versus the estimated cost of repair. This is prior to our use of a spreadsheet, so this was based on seventy-five dollars per square foot is where the repair number came from, but looking at the photos, aside from that estimate, it would still be above fifty percent of the land, or the building value of twenty-eight hundred, or twenty-eight thousand, I mean, to repair that.
Between now and the time that the family can get it demolished, is, can this place be secured to keep people out of it?
Yes, it, it is currently secured, but we're looking to, to maintain that authority to do so.
And what kind of cost will the city incur from two thousand seventeen until the date of destruction or deconstruction?
Well, could you explain your question a little bit more? What do you mean?
Has the city got any money tied up in this?
Oh, we do have a few hundred dollars in public nuisance liens that we put on recently when we cleaned up a lot of the scrap metal and recycling that someone was doing in the back, but aside from that, we don't have a whole lot of liens on this property. That would be it, I would say, probably a few hundred. I don't have the exact number, but it's only maybe two, three hundred.
And come ninety days, the building's still standing there, what's our next?
I will engage with the, the heirs who's been responsive, and we'll see where they're at, and if they're not there, we'll potentially initiate our demolition process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Barnett?
Um, I just wanted some clarity. So the heir that you've talked to, you said this, the first time you talked to her was today?
It was maybe shortly before the last meeting I had spoken with her, and I touched base with her again today, just to make sure we're all on the same page with what their plan is.
All right.
Yeah, our, our notice of condemnation made it to her. Our other findings of fact, it's very challenging to find addresses for people who don't update their addresses and, and kind of move around, but we were able to locate her for the notice for this. But everything we've done on this was, was published in the newspaper and posted on the property.
Right, so, and you're actually asking us then to allow her the ninety days to demolish it?
Yes, I, I think that's been on par with our previous recommendations of ninety days to allow somebody to, to step in before we have to begin our process.
Is that ninety days from today or ninety days from a previous date?
From, from the issuance of the ordinance.
So which was what date was that?
Oh, the issuance of this ordinance that we're discussing. So from today, yeah.
All right. I, I'd hope that they can work it out, because a lot of people lose heir property, you know, and I hope that they can work that out. All right, thank you.
Well, one more question, Ms. Renner. Is she authorized to speak on behalf of the family, or do you still have to get signatures from the, the whole?
We have to do, do nothing on that. That would be amongst the family on who has authority to do what with the property. So where we're at is, and I won't get into the, the potential dispute within the family of who has ownership and who does not, because that's not really my place to speak on it, but with the approval of this ordinance, regardless of who owns the property, we have the authority to move and take care of it as necessary.
Okay.
Spears?
My question is, if the family did not decide to demolish it, but agreed to, or just kept it secure, what, what would we do then?
We would likely assess the situation and potentially move forward with demolition as needed.
But even, so, just because, how long would they be able to just secure it without being in violation of, of any code or anything like that?
The, the property is currently in violation of the city's minimum housing code, and in general, and we can have a conversation outside of this if you like, but I'm happy to explain, we generally treat vacant and occupied properties the same, whether, in terms of the same standard of habitability. So if they chose to secure this and, and do nothing, then we would look at our options underneath this ordinance of what, what we needed to do, depending on the situation. So it might be, you know, a hundred days we move to demolish, it might be a hundred and eighty days, it might be a year. It really just kind of depends on what resources we have available and priority.
Well, my, I'm, I'm asking that because I, I think we all know that this heir property thing is an issue within our community, and if, if a family didn't have the resources, you know, and, and they were just trying to keep their property, that would be a pretty good question, like, what, what bounds or what grounds that did they have to, you know, maintain their property without being on, on the wrong side of the law, so to say? maintain their property without being on the wrong side of the law, so to say?
Yeah, I understand it, and I agree that it is. It is a problem that we are working on. Thank you.
Anderson?
So Brian, are you, I heard you say, let's give them 90 days, and then I thought I heard you saying you want us to approve the ordinance. Are you really saying if we approve the ordinance, they're still got 90 days? Is that what you're, they've got to have 90 days to do something?
Yes, yeah. So sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We do build into the ordinance a compliance period, though we are not required to. We choose to. And it's at council's discretion on what that period is.
Your staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance, but to allow 90 days before you take action?
Correct, and that is on par with what we've done this year thus far.
Thank you.
Brian, on these heir properties, when the property starts to fall in disrepair and we have to then take action, do you share the resources in the community that some of the nonprofits that we, the city, support like Warm and other Habitat for Humanity? Do you share those resources with property owners to see if there's maybe another option that they can be helped with?
Yes, we do. Our current initial notice has resources or has links to resources through our community development programs. And then when we have engagement from family, we work with them to connect with various organizations that can help clear title and can help get... And the biggest thing with rehabilitation programs is clear title. Almost all of them require clear title. So there's a lot of resources and energy put into trying to locate people to help clear title.
Do you have questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is the property owner here?
Yeah, she couldn't be here.
Okay, she could be. I'm sorry. Okay, now we'll open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this ordinance, PH 1. Mr. Sparks, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm so glad to be on this side of the grass. I'm Ron Sparks. I have no interest at all in this building particularly, but this is a problem that's come back when I was on council and through now, how to save heir property. And sadly, I'm making money off of these. I got clients all over the country calling me. I found this house on X Street, Y Street. Can you go look at it? And he buying these things sight unseen, I had one client, bless her heart. I looked at the house and, ma'am, do you realize this was a crack house? He said, I'm stepping on crack vows now. There's bullet cases everywhere. And by the way, there's no back wall on this house. This house only has three walls and a roof and a piece of a floor. There's got to be a path to restore, to find, well, with heir property, as I say so often, we all have families. And they don't agree on nothing, especially when it comes to when mama has died or granddad has died and they've left something. People scattered, I may have one family member that's been paying the taxes. And then when it finally looks like it's going to turn into something, everybody rise up. Well, you know, you've got money. I ain't got no money. We need to sell this. No, we need to redevelop it. And seeing how, long story short, not in particular this particular piece of property, council needs to come up with a path. I know I didn't do it when I was here, so it's my fault, of course. But we've got to find a path to save these houses, because it's, as you know what happens, people buy four or five of these up, then we demolish all of them, put up a multifamily. And then we go back to the eternal question of, the eternal question of affordable housing. And sadly, and he mentioned earlier, our programs require clear title. And that's just, you know, good business. You know, you're going to loan somebody some money, you need to have a path to recover should something go wrong. I had one sad case when I was here a few hundred years ago when I was on council. Well, somebody came to the city, got in the city program, got the house repaired, and couldn't afford the $27 a month mortgage. That's all it was. By the time it came to me, the city had already issued demolition orders, I mean, orders to take it. I'm going, could you have sold bottles? Could you have, you know, GoFundMe'd or something? But people are proud, and they don't want to let people know that they're in trouble. Long story short, I don't know what's going to be the issue with this house here. It's unfit for human habitation. By God, it's unfit for human habitation. Let's find a way to restore our base. And just wanted to have a few words about this. I'm sure you probably got some others, and I'm not going to come back up. It's the same thing. I want us to find a way to save these houses. Most of them are African-American, and there had been rumors, of course unfounded, that the city has been going out locating these houses for, quote-unquote, developers. I'm sure that's not happening. I'm sure it's not. But that's the perception, is that the city start calling about a particular home. I got a client right now, house is worth $300,000 or $400,000. I'm restoring it, but he's been getting pressure. You need to sell this thing. You need to sell this thing, as if he shouldn't own a $400,000 house, just because he's a brother. Why do you own this house free and clear? You must have done something. No inheritance. What a concept. And that's what we want to be able to do with all these properties, let it pass down through generations. I'm going to start running my mafia. I've got a lot of stuff on the agenda, and this is not what I came here for. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Madam Clark, do you have any additional comments that you've received? Okay. Any further questions from council?
I do want to add that I agree with Mr. Sparks. We understand that what's taking place in the community, and I think there should be some sort of a peace that we should have where we can save someone's property, heir property, even if the family is disgruntled or whatever, and can't come to a conclusion, and they may not have the resources. And I know we have hot program, and we have, we do have some programs, but I disagree with Mr. Sparks. We know that this is a problem, and I think that we should collectively look at it instead of just case-by-case basis.
Mr. Grady?
Yeah, I don't want us to forget that we do have programs to save houses. We're saving houses all the time. We've got our house rehabilitation program. So we are saving houses. They're not in this bad a condition. The fact is, once a house gets this far, demolition is probably the best thing that can happen, and you start over. And Ron, there's a way to do that. There's a law here in North Carolina. We could decide to appoint receivers who would take over the property, do whatever repair, including demolish, if that's appropriate, and then the receiver sells it. But the receiver gets paid first. It doesn't salvage the heir's value in the property, and usually it's wiped out. So some of the solutions that are presented to us are harsh, so we haven't chosen to use them. But what we're trying to do is rehab houses, and we spend a lot of money on that. Try to get them way before they look like this. And as you'll notice on the timeline, this hasn't been out there for a long time. We need to kind of speed this process up, get the worst off, and hopefully have new houses built there. And at the same time, continue to invest the city's taxpayers' money into helping those that are not this bad get rehabbed and save them. I think that's what we've been trying to do.
Mr. Anderson?
But part of what Mr. Grady said, I mean, that's the issue. I don't know how, maybe under Brian's, you know, leadership, it can improve. But when something sits there with the roof open for four years, and you have, you know, biggest rain year in the history of our area, what, 18, you know, hurricanes? I mean, it's just, it's toast after four years of sitting open to the elements. So I don't know how we, the key is somehow to try to really tighten that up if we want to try to save it, because at this point, I mean, the land is the value. There's none left in the house. So Brian, you fix that, will you?
All right. Mr. Haynes?
Well, I was going to say, what Mr. Grady did is that this city makes a tremendous effort to save houses, rehabilitate houses, and we invested a lot of money in that. And we have a number of really very active and successful programs to do that. Suzanne's back there. She can give any of us a little primer reminder on all of that. But I do think that doing this, and I'm glad the family is willing to do this, because even though the house itself will be razed, that does preserve the land in the family rather than our, which at one point we talked about foreclosing on things, and then to try to clear up these multitude of heirs and start over again. So this does, this process does maintain that land in the name of this family. So I think that's a positive, and it gets them away from any liability or whatever, whatever, about this obviously structure that's not habitable. So, you know, we wish it didn't happen, but it did, and we've got to make the best of a bad situation.
Well, when you talk about making the best of a bad situation, you have to talk about access to resources. So a lot of people in these situations do not have the access to resources that others may have, that potential buyers. Mr. Sparks said himself, people are buying homes where they didn't even see the home. Three walls and a piece of a roof and a piece of a floor. But if you have access to resources, six months, you've got a beautiful home where someone else who owned that home couldn't do that. They didn't have access to that type, that kind of capital or those resources. And we all also know about how quickly the funding in our program goes. And we've been innovative in a way where we've added more money to try to expand those programs. So I think we cannot, we can't miss that piece of this part of our process.
Kevin, I don't disagree with you at all. I think the thing that Ron was alluding to, and I think the most difficult part is on the heir properties. If, let's just say there's a couple of kids, and the person that owns the property passes away, all of those kids have rights to that property. They may be scattered all over, you know, the country. Some may even be here in Wilmington. If one of those kids passes away, it goes on to their kids, and there may be two or three kids. So sometimes we're talking about people that may be 17, 20 heirs. The tough part about this is, so people will understand, is all 20 of those heirs, or however many heirs there are, have to agree. If one heir objects, even if you have 19 that are willing to cosign or to do something to fix the house up, but that one heir holds out for whatever no reason, because he might be upset with a brother, a sister, a cousin, whatever the case is, it stops it in its tracks. And I think those are the most difficult cases, or the heir cases. If it's usually one or two people that own property, you can usually work it out or find some resource for them. But when you have multiple heirs, it's a very difficult situation. And you're right, Ron, we just haven't been able to crack that and figure it out, is how do you get the heirs to agree to do something? So that's the most difficult part. Mr. Barnett, I'm sorry.
The same thing is that the major issue, I think sometimes we have these kind of properties, is, you know, grandmama leaves, and then you've got six or eight people who are fighting over this one piece of property. And the only thing I would say to our citizens is, get your house in order, you know? Decide what you guys are going to do with grandmom's land, because God's not making any more land, you know? And it's important that we keep the property in grandma's name, you know? That's all. But I'm in favor of the motion.
I just wanted to share one thing just real quick. I'm involved in an heir piece of property that was left down from 1930. There must be 60 people involved. And there's still, we can't figure out how to do it. So I understand it's a difficult situation. I just, I want to relinquish my interest and just go on about it. But anyway, we have, I have to close the public hearing. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Grady, second by Councilmember Barnett, and discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. That passes unanimously on first reading. It's our motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Councilmember Rannister, second by Councilmember Grady, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH 2, which is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Wilmington to rezone a property located at 2430, 2370, 2374, and 2346 Carolina Beach Road, and 2365 Washington Street from CB Community Business and CS Commercial Services to MFMH Multifamily Medium High Density Residential. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city management, Mr. Tandy Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jeff Walton, our associate planner, will overview this item for us.
Good evening. The subject property was annexed into the city effective December 27, 1964, and was zoned R2 Multiple Family District. The Starway Drive-In Theater, located on the larger rear portion of the property, opened in 1955 with a car capacity of 700 vehicles, and closed in 1985. The Starway Flea Market opened shortly after and is currently operating at the site. On May 3, 1994, City Council rezoned the site from MFM Multifamily Medium Density Residential District to CB Community Business District. At that time, the Starway Flea Market was operating as a non-conform use on-site. To give you an area where this is located, it's near the Sunset South neighborhood along Carolina Beach Road, across the street from Medical Center, near the intersection of Shipyard and Carolina Beach. These are some of the existing conditions on-site. As you can see, the remnants of the Starway Theater and the Flea Market. These are some adjacent properties on Carolina Beach Road, and some adjacent properties in Sunset South to the west. The applicant requests to rezone the property from CB and CS to Multifamily Medium High. Two vehicular access points exist along Carolina Beach Road and, well, my map don't work. Anyway, it exists on Carolina Beach Road as well as Maryland Avenue to the rear. The site does not front a signalized intersection along Carolina Beach Road, but interconnectivity from Maryland to Bell Street could bring potential traffic to the signal at Carolina Beach Road and Medical Center Drive. This section of Carolina Beach Road does operate a level of service of F. The NC DOT has an active tip project that will be installing traffic improvements and control measures along this section of Carolina Beach Road. Those plans are still in the design phase. Right-of-way acquisition is expected in 2028, and the build-out in 2029. The site is identified as being a suburban commercial retrofit area of opportunity, a mixed-use place, a community connector, complete street, a transit-oriented mixed-use center, and a high-capacity transit route. The comprehensive plan calls for fostering a public realm that encourages complete streets and development forums that give equal weight to pedestrian comfort and vehicular movement. The site is located within an area that is near commercial services and uses, near medical services, and within existing high-capacity transit route. The proposed multifamily zoning presents an appropriate transition from the commercial areas along Carolina Beach Road to the existing residential within the Sunset South neighborhood. Though the site presents an opportunity to provide affordable housing units, the applicant has not mentioned that in their application or submitted plans for a conditional district rezoning request. The proposed general rezoning is consistent with the recommendations. Can you advance that slide? The proposed general rezoning is consistent with the recommendations to create Wilmington comprehensive plan, the city's strategic plan. However, the plan does discourage concentrating low-to-moderate income housing units in one location rather than the preferred mixed incomes across all boards. Based on the information, staff, police requests is reasonable and in the public interest. We recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Barnett?
May, just a minute ago, the one that said, I know you mentioned that they have not mentioned affordable housing. And then you just said something about low rent housing and moderate. Can you repeat that statement for me?
Sure, sure.
Of three sentences on.
It's, we, the comprehensive plan discourages concentrating low income in one specific area. It promotes a mixture of incomes from all across the boards to foster a community rather than a concentration of low income. And so that's, that was the point of that statement. The applicant hasn't approached for affordable housing, but the discussion may come up this evening, and we just wanted to make that statement.
Okay, I hope it comes up.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. O'Grady. So do you have any discussion with the applicant about a conditional district zoning here? Because this site cries out to have a conditional district. We don't know where the traffic's going to go. We don't know how much it's going to be. You've described driving all that traffic through an existing, stable residential area. That's not a solution. I can't understand why this is not a conditional district, where we all know what's going to get built, what's the, is it going to be affordable housing or not, how are they going to handle the traffic, how high are the buildings going to be? We don't know any of that. How can we possibly approve this?
Those are all-
So I'm like a hard no right now. I'm going to be hard to convince. I just let you know.
No, those are all valid concerns, Councilman O'Grady, and those are-
Did you discuss conditional district with them?
We did. We did discuss conditional districts.
And they didn't want to agree to any conditions?
I would prefer the applicant to address your question on that. Our opinion is that they were wanting to make a deadline for a affordable housing-type project and had to go through the CD, or excuse me, the straight rezoning process. That's my interpretation. I believe Ms. Wolf is also prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Bear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Cindy Wolf, and I'm working with the owner and the potential developer of this property. You're all certainly aware of the Starway Theater and its more recently over the years Flea Market location. And I believe we could agree, though, that based on the location of this property, on the bus line, being near recreational opportunities, and walkability to shopping and service businesses, it is an underused property. There has been no interest in its development for commercial The tract is split-zoned with community business on the bulk of it and commercial services, redheaded stepchild of our zoning districts, it seems usually, along Carolina Beach Road Corridor. After conversation with staff, and expanded staff, when we started this, I mean, you know me, my first gut reaction is always a conditional district. But this particular site for multifamily use is more appropriate than its current zoning. And that general district standards for multifamily housing will be adequate to address impact on surrounding community. The process for any type of development in a multifamily district involves subdivision review. It involves traffic impact analysis. If a project is large enough to generate the type of trip generation that a larger project has, those are generally issues that a conditional district is intended to address if necessary. But I think the district standards for multifamily, we felt, and after conversations with staff, felt, this is still the most appropriate use for this site. Now, the thing with conditional zoning is it is certainly more task-intensive and time-consuming. And that presented an issue with the low-income housing tax credit project that we're proposing for this property. Application determination of qualifications are deadline-sensitive. There's a window for all of these things. Our concern was that this council generally does not hear conditional district petitions during November and December of a municipal election year. Waiting for an approval in January could have been problematic. So we proceeded with a general rezoning based upon all of the requirements that the Land Development Code institutes for any type of development. We're certainly aware that the specific projects and details that we're talking about with this affordable housing are not relevant to a conventional rezoning. However, I would like to share a status of the tasks that have been underway and the commitment already made to making this project happen. ALITAC, that Low Income Housing Tax Credit application, has been made to the state. A traffic impact analysis is underway. A necessary street closure request has been filed, and detailed design for a major subdivision is underway for approval by the subdivision review board for the extension of Maryland Avenue. All of those things have to happen no matter what type of district this is in multifamily. Regardless, rezoning of these lands for multifamily is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and it's an excellent opportunity to bridge a gap in our housing needs with a strategy of location-efficient infill. We appreciate the staff and planning commission recommendations, and I believe you've also received letters of support from various community organizations. My associate, Ted Helbron, has a brief narrative and some exhibits on the ALITAC process that we'd just like to share with you and explain how this site is an excellent opportunity to promote our housing goals for the city. After that, I'd be glad, and I'm sure he would do, to answer any questions.
Mayor and council members, thank you for your time and consideration tonight. While we know the project-specific discussion is outside of the scope of our rezoning application, we wanted to provide some brief context to tonight's petition. To be clear, our development will be a workforce apartment community targeting Wilmington residents earning 60% of the area median income, and will be funded via 4% Low Income Housing Tax Credit from North Carolina's Housing Finance Agency. Our first slide is a table that council will be very familiar with, as it comes from the Bowen National Research Housing Needs Assessment jointly commissioned by the city and the county. A meaningful housing gap exists here in Wilmington, particularly for workforce rental housing, and our project hopes to play a small role in helping to close that gap. Slide two is an overview of the 4% Low Income Housing Tax Credit units that have been built across the state of North Carolina since 2000. Wilmington's lower total here can be attributed to a lack of available land and rents that are lower than some of its large metro peers, such as Raleigh, Charlotte, and Durham. Simply put, it is much harder to find 4% projects that work in Wilmington versus the rest of the state, and the data bears that reality out. Slide three illustrates what makes our site unique and allows for a 4% ALITAC development to work. HUD, Housing and Urban Development, defines what it calls qualified census tracts around the country, and developments that fall within those tracts are eligible to receive an extra 30% allocation of tax credits. The map here shows the qualified census tracts in Wilmington shaded in purple. Our site's location within the QCT is mission-critical. It creates an extra $5 to $6 million in tax credit funds that our development would not work without. We believe that this is likely the only site, greater than 10 acres, in Wilmington's qualified census tracts, suitable for apartments and available for development today. To bridge the housing gap here in Wilmington, sites in the QCT, like ours, must be capitalized on and cannot be lost to market rate development. While we are proud that our development specifically targets Wilmington's workforce community, it's important that we take care of any current residents that will be displaced as a result. To our knowledge, there are four current tenants on the 15.6-acre property, renting three individual units across two older houses. Given our project will be receiving federal funding, we are bound by the Uniform Relocation Act to assist each of these tenants in finding new housing. We will be paying for their moving costs, as well as any added housing costs above their current rent for a period of 3.5 years. We'd like to finish by highlighting our experience across the Carolinas and here in Wilmington. We have experienced building, developing, and managing tax credit workforce communities here in Wilmington. We look forward to the opportunity to bring more workforce housing to the city, and happy to answer any questions council might have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah, question for the applicant. What if you don't get the financing?
I'm sorry?
What if you don't get it? What if you don't get the tax credit project? Now we've done a general rezoning and made this available for residential development, and no conditions, and no affordable housing.
In this location, we believe that multifamily housing will be naturally occurring somewhat affordable based upon its location in town. But conditions-wise, the conditions we generally see on our list with multifamily housing has to do with meeting the traffic impact analysis, going through the technical review committee, providing stormwater. Those things happen whether they're conditioned or not. And most often, conditional district uses are appropriate to protect the surrounding community. Here, we are in a community where we have multifamily, we have heavy-duty commercial, we have a power station, and we have a community behind us that, yes, is single-family, but it is zoned multifamily medium. Regardless, any attached housing on this site has all of the same buffer yards that would have been pertinent in the normal land development code requirements.
Yeah, but usually we get to see that. We're not seeing any of that here. What we're seeing is green line on a map saying, "Trust us, we're going to build a nice project." I'm sorry, but we've got a neighborhood right next to it. And I want to know what the impact's going to be. And you're saying it will have an impact. You're directing the traffic through there. And this is just wrong.
And that's handled by a traffic impact analysis that has to be part and part-
So you want to make this conditioned on that? No, no conditions.
No, the conditions are provided in your land development code, normally for multifamily development.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Cindy, I mentioned, does this developer have other projects currently complete and up and running in Wilmington?
Not in Wilmington, because there has not been any ALITAC approvals.
It just had a star there on his little map.
That's, it was a white star. It wasn't colored in. It is an active project.
Do you have any examples of what those projects look like?
Certainly not with me. I mean, that's something that we could provide if this meeting were continued.
Well, I mean, you're trying to, there is a sense of, like Kevin was saying, or O'Grady, we've got two Kevins now. He was saying, you're asking us to trust you. They're not somebody that we've dealt with before. I could give you a couple, where would that happen? And whenever I quit sitting up here, I'll tell you that they were the worst decisions I made when sitting up here. So trying to gauge what would, you know, what's these people's track record? What do they build? What does it look like? And that kind of thing. So I need something, you know, something going, not just, and I wasn't aware that we did not hear conditional, I mean, number one, an election's over even if we were the first week in November, so that we don't hear them the second meeting in November. I've just never heard of that. I mean, maybe that's something that management has done, but it certainly hadn't been at my request, anyway. I'm not aware of that. But I hear what you're saying, that, you know, it's just kind of, that's what would naturally occur here in terms of multifamily. But you don't have a stoplight. I mean, you have some issues. And, I mean, how many units would the, would the new code allow?
The, this district that is being requested would allow about 350-some units.
Is that something per acre kind of thing, or?
Yes, it is. It's up to 25 units per acre.
Okay. And then if it's affordable, it goes higher?
If it's affordable, if it's all affordable, it doesn't need to go higher.
The whole thing is going to be, so you're going to get, but with the number you gave me, that number, or the number that was just a normal?
The project that we're working with right now, as far as the traffic impact analysis, the other items that we're talking about, where it's at 370 or 380-some units. That's what we're working towards in the background. But all of those multifamily, any multifamily has to go through all of those same tasks.
Is there any kind of, can they share any kind of, do they anticipate a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? Kind of, what do we, what's a typical project of yours?
Absolutely.
I wish we had a picture of, hey, this is the closest project you have currently to what this project would be. You know, something, Ms. Haines always says, we love pictures. You know, we're like kindergartners or something. We really love color and pictures. And Cindy's usually pretty doggone good at that, but she's usually doing a CD. So can you enlighten us a little more?
Yeah, absolutely. So the project that's been submitted to NCHFA includes 278 units. It's a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The exact split, you're going to have to forgive me, I don't know off the top of my head. But in the ballpark of 25 one-bedrooms, and the balance are twos and threes, with a concentration of twos. As it relates to, we have a number of other projects across both South and North Carolina. Unfortunately, we did not bring pictures of those projects with us tonight. We are actively working on other 4% Low Income Housing Tax Credit projects, aside from here in Wilmington, a project in Raleigh, a project in Durham, and we're recently awarded a 9% project in Rocky Mountain.
You have a website?
Yes.
Have pictures of the, of some of your projects?
Yes.
What's the website?
BradleyDevelopment.com.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barnett?
You mentioned that you're-
Michael.
I'm sorry. Apologize. You mentioned that you're applying for Low Income Tax Credit.
We have applied.
You have applied. And you also mentioned that there's a time crunch that, okay, so you've applied, but, okay, going back to Councilmember O'Grady says, so you won't know whether or not you're going to get Low Income Tax Credit until when? When will you know that?
It's in January.
It's in January.
Our final application to the state is due by the end of the year, which means all the public approvals associated with the project and our funding commitments are required by the end of the year. And as Cindy discussed, we were under the impression that we were not going to be able to receive a city council hearing in the November-December window, which led to the decision for a straight reason.
Okay, so then, also with that timeframe, I think I saw something where you said, if you use the Low Income Tax Credit, it's a 42-month window or something. Help me-
I apologize. I was muttering, unintentionally muddled the conversation slightly. There are a small handful, less than five residents on the property currently. And because the project will receive federal funds, we'll be responsible for paying for relocation expenses and any increased housing costs for any of the existing site tenants for a period of 42 months or three and a half years. That's separate apart from the fact that the project will be funded with a Low Income Housing Tax Credit.
So it will remain low-income housing for?
We're making sure that any residents of the site that are dislocated are financially secure in their housing for the next 42 months from the start of construction of the project. But the commitment that we're making as a part of the ALITAC tax credit is for extended affordability for the project itself, for 15 years. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. Okay.
A question.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I make a clarification? And just so that we don't debate and-
And just so that we don't debate and council wonder and the public wonder, section 18, 229 of our code, and it is buried in the zoning code. It's not something that you would look at very often, and it's something that council likely would not be familiar with because staff simply follows it and does not bring you conditional district zoning requests during this time period. Our code says that between election day, council election days, and the day after your organizational meeting, that no votes on conditional districts can be taken. And that means for this year, your meetings of 11-3, 11-17, and 12-7, those meetings are off limits for a conditional district vote, just for clarification.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Anderson, Mr. O'Grady, absolutely, conditional districts, there's the dog and pony show, there's examples. We could bring examples of our plan. We can bring examples of what they have done in the past. But as a conventional, I have to very, step very lightly because you're not supposed to take that into consideration. But we believe that this site is appropriate for multifamily and that the code has in it all of the same requirements put on a development plan that would be put on a conditional concept plan. Are you not following that?
I follow you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Haynes, you were...
Yes.
Ms. Haynes, yes, please.
You know, we've been down this road with other people in the past, several last 10 years anyway, a couple of them, and not everybody gets their tax credits that they're applying for. So, I'm curious as to what the success rate of this developer is for the, receiving the credits that they're applying for.
So, not to get too wonky tonight, but there are two different kinds of tax credits that NCHFA offers. You have a 9% tax credit, which is highly competitive, it pays for a large percentage of the project's costs, couple hundred applications are made a year, 30 to 40 projects are selected. Those rate, the success rate associated with that credit is not high for any developer. That's not the credit that we're seeking tonight. Credit that we're seeking as a part of the project that we're here in front of you to discuss tonight. The credit that we will be seeking is a 4% tax credit. It comes with a tax-free bond allocation, and North Carolina is one of the rare larger states in the country where it is not a competitive bond state. So if you're project pencils, you will get funded. So there is not the same level of approval risk at NCHFA associated with the tax credit that we are seeking than the standard 9% projects that I am going to assume have come before this council in the past.
Okay, thank you. Now, since you've already applied for your, your application's already in and you've applied for it, there was some implication this morning that you needed to have this prior to applying, but that's not true. You just need to have it before the awards are made?
So they're unnecessarily complex. There are two applications that are made to NCHFA. There's a prelim application and a final application. With the prelim application, we do not need to have our zoning in place. Before we make the final application, we do. The final application has to be in by the end of the year. And so it's incumbent that we receive the rezon that the project requires to be built before the end of the year, which caused us to be having this discussion tonight.
Repeat that last sentence.
The final application has to be submitted to NCHFA by the end of the year. To submit the final application, the rezoning that the site would need for the level of density included in the application needs to be in place by the time the final application is made, which is the end of the year.
Which is the end of the year. So this is September, this is the first meeting in September, so we have three more meetings before election day. I noticed that, let me ask you this, if you don't receive the tax credits, what's Plan B? Let's just say hypothetically, they don't think your project pencil's out and they don't give them to you. So what would Plan B be?
To be totally honest, because North Carolina is not a competitive bond state, we have not considered the possibility of not getting this project funded. Because bond projects in North Carolina that apply for a 4% credit get funded, again, because North Carolina has never been a competitive bond state in the history of the LIHTC program.
Okay, so you've gotten whatever you've ever replied for in the 4% program?
Exactly. There is no competition for 4% deals in North Carolina as of today. Now, we're discussing this, there is rumor that that dynamic may change in the near future, which in part would be the reason why an application this year is so critically important. If the project cannot be, cannot receive a final application by the end of the year, then we would have to restart the entire process next year and potentially be subject to a competitive bond environment, which would lessen our level of confidence that we'd be able to be awarded the credits and the bonds we'd need to build this LIHTC deal, to build the project.
Okay, I think everybody up here, nobody up here is opposed to affordable housing. We are all supporting that. That's obvious of the tremendous commitment that we have through our recent budgeting process. We received some letters that Cindy was kind enough to forward through the clerk, to council, letters of support, but they were all letters of support for affordable housing. And I think that's the concern of some of us here, is we're happy for you to get your tax credits and happy for you to develop the land. We want a guarantee of some sort that it's going to be affordable housing and that you're not gonna get a straight rezoning, which I don't think I can support at this point. That you, if, that we need some sort of more significant guarantee than, hey, we're good guys and we're gonna do it, trust us. See what I'm saying?
Understood.
We want the affordable housing. We think it's a great location. We think it's great. We hope you guys are, you know, straight with us. That'd be fabulous. But, we don't really have anything to let us know that. You know, as Mr. Anderson said, we don't have any background, we don't have any pictures of any projects you've done, we don't have anything to reassure us that actually it might be affordable housing, rather than not getting the tax things for some strange reason. And then you've already got a conditional rezoning. A, you either sell the property, because now it's more valuable, because it's been rezoned for multifamily, and you can have a pretty dense project there. Or you just go ahead yourselves and build something that's not affordable. Do you see what I'm saying? That's our, I think, that's certainly my concern and Mr. O'Grady's.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is, I'm concerned about the impact on the neighborhood that's right behind it. I mean, our little cheat sheets on what we should read, I mean, rejection one says, would not have, would have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. I don't know. Right now, I have to say, well, it could. You're telling us you're gonna funnel all the traffic through the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, Cindy's shaking her head no.
They can go out through Maryland.
That would not be permitted by a traffic impact analysis. We have two access points on Carolina Beach Road. We have a stubbed interconnectivity. I'm just saying that there are certain things that the staff and your code do handle. If there is some way outside of conditional district to guarantee that unless that staff would have that opportunity to rezon this back on, at a point. I believe the city attorney had some creative ideas that may alleviate some of your concerns, and we'd certainly be more than willing to hear them and accept them. But timing was of the essence. We felt, staff felt, the planning commission felt that no matter what, this is a more appropriate site for multifamily.
I don't get your timing issue.
And I'm just saying, if there is some other means of delaying this for a few weeks, showing you pictures of those things, although they can't be part and parcel of your decision, but the possibility that there could be some agreement that the rezoning was, I guess, sort of time-sensitive or...
I think if you had come tonight with a conditional rezoning request and saying that it would be affordable housing, or 80% of it would be affordable housing and the rest market rate or something, I think it would be fine.
The issue is, we could not have gotten a conditional district to you before November because of a traffic impact analysis, because of subdivision review board, because of all those things that a conditional district, I have to get them through before they get to you. It was not possible to make this affordable project work. But we're willing to certainly, you know...
Maybe you should've started earlier.
Can I make, Cindy, Cindy, Cindy?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of consternation with straight-up rezonings, you know that.
I understand.
I mean, in all our years up here, I think we've only done maybe three or four.
Not many.
Not many. And this is, I have to believe that the man that has spoken here is gonna get the money, but we don't know that for certain. I mean, lightning can strike us at any moment. I guess my question is this, if we were to rezon this property, and for one reason or another you cannot get the funding, you'd be willing, because we're actually, we're downzoning the property, we're not upzoning the property here currently, CB going down to multifamily, would you be willing, I guess, to go into some sort of a contract agreement with the city that you would give us some notice that if he did not receive that money or did receive the funding?
Yes, I certainly think that is...
That we could rezon the property back to CB, so the consternation would go away?
That would absolutely take the approval of the current owner.
Okay, so John, can we do the, can we do a contract?
We looked at that, Mr. Mayor, when you anticipated this might be an issue. And a contract that is outside of the rezoning, a straight rezoning, there are no conditions on it, either is or it isn't. A contract outside of that, we do not believe would be an exaction. If all it is, is a contract wherein the property owner, which is not the applicant here, but the property owner agrees to give the city notice that they intend to sell the property because they did not get their funding, we believe that that contract would be legally enforceable. Obviously, the city would want as much notice as possible so that the city could then initiate rezoning on its own, at its own request. City council's certainly empowered to do that. And then that rezoning would go through the process and you would rezon it back so that it is not just the open MF zoning district that council has already pointed out the shortcomings of. I must tell council that the outside notice contract is an imperfect assurance because if someone were to begin a use that was legal and then you changed the zoning, that use would be grandfathered in, or if they obtained a development approval in the meantime, then they would have a vested right. So I don't believe that would be very likely, but council would be taking a lesser, but still a certain amount on faith.
And so the property owner would have to make that call?
Yes, and if council is so minded, frankly, a continuance for two weeks would allow us time to work through a brief contract and a small amount of consideration to be sure that the contract is legally binding, and it would give the city notice. And frankly, I would make it a three-party contract with the applicant as well, so that the applicant is obligated to let us know if the funding does not work and the project is going to be a no-go.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, and then Mr. Rabinbark, and then Ms. Haynes.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. No.
If it's going down that track, I can live with that, and my question's kinda mute, but I found your website, and I was wanting to know if there was a project you envisioned that looked something like what you envisioned doing here? I see Bay Point, Carolina Cove, I'm in the right place, Clear Pond, is that you?
That website needs a little bit of updating.
Well, if we're going down that path, like I said, it isn't gonna matter, you're gonna hopefully produce some...
That would be the same quality, for sure.
Which one?
Well, quality-wise, all of them. Bay Point is an example, but those are...
Myrtle Beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That's where I'm from. There should be a deal on there. Sea Point might be a little closer to it, but if you go through...
Sea Point's in Beaufort?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
I have great confidence that this is gonna happen, the 4%, I'm fairly familiar with it, and Ted's right with the probability. But what we have here, what we have here is the unsure, the folks, my brethren up here that, you know, if it doesn't happen, then what? If that contract that the attorney's talking about is something that will get us from here to there and give everybody a peer assurance that in the event that it doesn't fly, the property can revert back to its existing zoning, to me, that's, you know, it's kind of coming in through the bathroom window, but it's a way to make it work. You agree?
Yes, sir. And we're certainly willing to investigate that over the next two weeks.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Spears? Go ahead, Mr. Spears.
Ms. Wolf, I want to, I wanna beat you up like everybody else did and then say that I don't trust you. I think on all of the other council meetings, when you bring something before us, we trust you. So I trust you tonight. I'm glad that the mayor introduced this option or alternative for us to get this thing done because during my tenure here, I've never seen this sort of project. And let me tip my hat to you, to you all, for bringing this forward, where we're seeing some true affordable housing. And I would like to speak for the community that, you know, we hope that this thing gets done and no one tries to dupe us, but I think the contract prevents that, and Wilmington should welcome one of these very rare projects. So, thank you.
Ms. Haynes?
Well, I certainly agree with Kevin. I think everybody up here is excited that we would get such a large affordable housing project. Nobody is objecting to any of that. We, you know, fingers crossed, that's what we're, you know, hoping for and praying for. I'm curious about this outside contract, and could we get the applicant to agree that, I don't know when, if it got rezoned, I assume that then you would execute your contract to purchase the land, or, I don't know?
Not until after the award of the, the approval of the application.
Okay, so if the application doesn't get approved, you're not gonna execute a contract?
I doubt very much if that's the case.
Okay. My concern is this idea about being vested, because we've had people before in other situations, not like this, that have put a bulldozer out there and pushed, you know, 25 feet of dirt and said that they then had a vested interest. So, I mean, that would be a concern.
The common law vesting, which is what the bulldozer just pushing dirt would be, that I see as a very, very low-risk possibility. A actual developmental or development approval wherein you get either a building permit or a erosion control permit, where you're starting the actual development approval process, that would give them approximately one year to continue on with it. That would be a vested right. If that occurred, then the city's rezoning would not prevent them from moving forward. And in all frankness, Mayor Protem, a contract such as this, the more that we require beyond mere notice, the more likely a court would be to hold that it's an exaction and beyond our power to require. A promise that they're not going to do that from the current owner, we could request that, but there again, that adds to the novel nature of such a contract.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I was just curious, because we've had that experience, so I was just curious about that. I mean, we're getting there. We just all wanna, you know, make sure we get affordable housing and that we don't get another one of these sort of semi-god-awful massive apartment buildings at market rate that a lot of people can't afford.
But I think you have to keep in mind too, that as CB, this could be a community-district mixed-use, and if it was dedicated as affordable, it could still be 25 units an acre, but there would be a commercial entity to it. So there's a lot of moving parts, but I believe this is the most agreeable certainly to our team, because we are striving to make that all happen.
So, do we wanna go ahead and continue this item for two weeks, our next city council meeting, see if the applicant and the city attorney's office can work on a contract?
We would be more than happy to.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, I would note... And, Mr. Mayor, I would note that the public hearing has not been opened at this point, so that is up to your pleasure.
We'll just leave it the way it is, we'll just continue the item, if that's okay. All right.
For the date certain?
What's the date certain, Madam Clerk? September 21st. So we'll continue this item to September the 21st, if somebody has to make a motion. We have a motion made by Mayor Protem Haynes, second by Councilmember Barnett. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH3, which is an ordinance to close a portion of the west side of an unimproved right-of-way of Nutt Street located at north of the Harnett Street intersection in the city of Wilmington. And this, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Cottle. Ms. Cottle?
Mr. Walton also has this item to overview for us.
Tonight, the applicant proposes to close a portion of the western side of Nutt Street right-of-way extending 305 feet north of the Harnett Street intersection. This is a general area of where the property is located. It's along the Kefir River, adjacent to Riverfront Park, PPD, Pier 33, that sort of area. I must admit, I took these photos before the park opened, so these are some construction photos, unfortunately, but it shows the Harnett Street location, looking north and looking south. Here's some adjacent photos to give you context of where this area is located. The subject right-of-way consists of Point 06 of an acre, and the remainder of Nutt Street would remain as a public street right-of-way and not part of this closure request. The road's closure is adjacent to the Kettler Wilmington Waterfront, a 293-unit apartment and mixed-use development that was approved for construction on May 5, 2021. The closure would allow for the Kettler project to relocate a transformer to the proposed closure area and allow for additional landscaping against Nutt Street. For Riverfront Park, the closure would allow for Nutt Street to separate park elements from the street and complete an internal sidewalk connection. The comprehensive plan calls for consideration given to the impacts of right-of-way closure that may have an impact on the surrounding street network, including both vehicular and pedestrian mobility. Since there is an existing road connection already in place, enclosed approximately to the site, staff believes requests would not have adverse impact on the surrounding street network. Closing this public right-of-way would not impair the surrounding public street network and would not adversely impact neighboring properties. The closure would result in additional lot area for the property adjacent to the right-of-way, allowing for redevelopment. Staff recommends approval request, and I believe another staff person is here to make a presentation.
All right, we have a question here by Councilmember McGrady.
So, the, the effect if we close this, what, half of that five, what's, I can't tell whether it's six feet or five feet, half of it becomes part of the road and the other half becomes part of Kettler property?
Sure. So, the remainder of Nutt Street would remain open, just the small sliver between these two images here would go to the Kettler property as well as to the city Wilmington.
That's what I mean. It's going to be split down half, because that's the law, right? If you close the street, half goes to the owner on each side.
If they were closing the entire street, Councilmember McGrady, half would go to the north and half would go to the south. Since this is a sliver of just the southern portion of the right-of-way, excuse me, the western portion of the right-of-way, it would be split between the Kettler property and the city park property.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, you have another presentation?
No, sir. I believe the applicant may have a presentation.
Okay. Is the applicant here? No. That's Denise.
Mr. Mayor, in an odd coincidence, the city is the applicant in this, in this, in this case, so Denise will be speaking on behalf of the staff.
Okay, Denise. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an overview of the Nutt Street right-of-way adjustment. In the rendering that you see on your screen, you'll see the full context of the coordination between the city Wilmington and the Kettler Development Team, which includes the right-of-way adjustment proposed along Nutt Street. Riverfront Park, located at 10 Cowan Street, is one of the largest urban parks in Wilmington, providing infrastructure for both recreation and performance spaces to support expansive experience of public space in the city along the river. The primary pedestrian entrance into the park is via the Nutt Street promenade, and it's bordered on both sides by the Kettler Development, the red boxes that you see on the drawing. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief overview of two elements that were related to the right-of-way adjustment on Nutt Street, which is shown on this map as Old French Street. The two items I'll talk about is the Kettler property dedication of the triangular property, which was complete, as well the Nutt Street right-of-way adjustment. The engineering department, including myself, Mike Niklikke, and Ann Balweg, have been working with Sean Evans and Courtney Salgado in the city attorney's office, along with representatives from Kettler, including Jennifer Scott, Bill Edwards, and Graham Tyrell. At the city council meeting on July 20th, the city accepted the triangular property shown in yellow on the map. This property transfer has been recorded. The conveyance of this piece of property was a key piece of the coordination between the city and Kettler, as it allows the Riverfront East, Riverfront Park East Alley, this portion shown here, to connect out to Nutt Street. It also provided a route for relocation of the 24-inch gravity sewer that crossed both parcels, as it was relocated into the purple alignment that you see on your screen. As you can see on these drawings, Nutt Street is a one-way street from north to south with on-street parking, sidewalks, and streetscape amenities. The existing right-of-way of Nutt Street, up until the triangular property, follows the back of the sidewalk, as you can see in the plan on the left. In order to have the right-of-way continue to follow the back of the sidewalk and provide a clear separation between the park and the street right-of-way, we're proposing shifting the right-of-way to follow the back of the sidewalk for the full length of this block of Nutt Street. This adjustment also provides an opportunity to locate Kettler's transformer on the east side of their building between the new right-of-way and their property, as opposed to using the triangular property where they had originally intended to locate their transformer. Additionally, the right-of-way adjustment will allow Kettler's building foundations to remain within their property and not encroach into the public right-of-way. This drawing shows the proposed adjustment of the right-of-way at larger scale on the left, and then a blown-up view on the right, showing the right-of-way adjustment. The right-of-way adjustment creates consistency in the right-of-way along the full block of Nutt Street, and the city and the Kettler team have been working together to find a solution in this area that's beneficial to both parties, and we think we've achieved it with this proposal. The Kettler team has dedicated the triangular property, and the deed has been recorded. City council was presented with the right-of-way adjustment by resolution on July 20, 2021, and the public hearing for that adjustment is taking place tonight. If the, if the adjustment is approved, the area of the park will increase in size by approximately 1,265 square feet. The Kettler property will increase in width along the eastern boundary line with a wider section on the north end, and will gain approximately 1,672 square feet. And that concludes my presentation. We're here, happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on this particular item. Seeing none, are there any comments that we received, Madam Clerk, at the city clerk's office? Okay. Were there any additional questions from council? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember McGrady, second by Councilmember Rabinbark. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item passes unanimously on first reading, is our motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Mayor Protem Haynes, second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our ordinances. Item 01 is the ordinance prohibiting discrimination in public accommodations within the city of Wilmington. And this, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Toni Cottle. Ms. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a second reading, we do not have a presentation for you, but both he and, both the city attorney and I are available for, to answer questions.
Okay. Are there any further questions from council, in respect to the ordinance? The only thing I'd like to say is, this ordinance is one step in a process toward building a more welcoming city, and as I've said before, it is not the final step. While this represents progress, and I do admit it does represent progress, we heard from some community members and people tonight and at our previous meeting that it could go further. That's why I am putting together a committee, or task force, however you want to call it, to look at ways to enhance protections and find additional opportunities to make our city more welcoming. We voted for this in our resolution at the last meeting. This task force will include many voices who have expressed concerns over a lack of protections in our city and state. As an example, I've asked Councilmember Kevin Spears to serve, as well as Jen Johnson, who spoke earlier this evening. It will include a diversity of voices, different perspectives, and a professional facilitator with experience in this area. So tonight, we can vote to make some important progress, build upon work we have already been doing, and also make clear that this isn't the end of the road, but a journey in that progress. And I know that we will hear from many voices, and I know a lot of concerns that have already been shared with me, and they should be evaluated and taken a look at. But this is a step, I believe, in the right direction. I know it didn't go all the way as some people wanted, but I believe that we will find other opportunities and ways to amend and to include in this ordinance concerns that people have shared with us. So, I thank you for participating, being here, and, and hearing from you. This is a very important issue for our community, and I've always said that if we're not a diverse city, if we're not a city that embraces diversity, that we will not be a great city, and it is very important to each and every one of us. So I thank you very much for your, your concerns and what you've shared with us. So, any other questions from council? Okay, I will make the motion to approve it. We have a second by Councilmember McGrady. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item passes six to one. That brings us to our next item of business, which is an R1, which is a resolution extending the period of the message "Black Lives Do Matter" in Racism Now and authorizing the manager to execute an addendum to the agreement for Gervais Memorial Park. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Kevin Spears. Mr. Spears?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sponsored this resolution as a, a way of saying that I appreciate the initiative, but I don't think we're quite done with the mission. We, we still have some unfinished business. It's been a kind gesture, but we, we just need more. But I think this vote of confidence from this council and this city has been a step in the right direction for what we want to be, for what this city wants to be, for how citizens of this city want to go forward. And so, I think one year was too soon for this to go away. No, we, we've gone beyond the daily protests of George Floyd, but we have not remedied those things in this nation. And so with that being said, I've asked for another year extension for the Black Lives Do Matter mural. And tonight, I'm asking for your support, as this, this project ties into a lot of things. This project ties into the Rise Together Initiative. This project has been used in, if I'm not incorrect, multiple film productions since being erected in Gervais Park. And so this thing is now a piece of, of our history, and we are, we are getting visitors and we're getting recognition for doing something, and, and not just doing something, but this mural, this piece of art, is beautiful. And, and I don't know if all members of council, of all members of staff, and certainly not all Wilmington, all citizens of Wilmington have visited this mural, but I can tell you, last year, when we had a soft opening, I told the crowd, it was like my Statue of Liberty, my own little personal Statue of Liberty. So I'm very proud to have been a part of this process and am proud to continue to, to fight for it, to remain for another year, and hopefully, we wouldn't have to, next year, or a year after that, revisit it being here. We'll, we'll consider this to be a representation of who we are as a city. And, and we have some members of the, the artists who contributed to this mural, and if you all don't mind, please stand for a second, because people thought this was, this was a divisive piece, and it was not. We, we had all types of citizens to, to participate and, and put together a beautiful piece of art for our city. So thank you, 18th floor.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from council? Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Speak, Kevin's speaking a little bit to like, I guess what I'm hearing is more, not just this year, but permanence, so is there, John, how this was passed as a, I forget, well, you're going to help me with the legal terminology, I hope, but it was a statement of, remind me, what was it, a political, what was a, help me out, statement of, I remember... It's, yes, sir, Councilmember, it is government speech. Government speech. In First Amendment law, there is the government speech doctrine that has come full circle, and it's in two cases. The key case is Pleasant Grove City, Utah. I've had citizens ask me about that, v. Summum, and in that case, the Supreme Court made clear that monuments accepted by the city, even if it's paid for by private folks, even if private folks continue to own it, the city can adopt that as government speech. And when it's the speech of the city, then you have much more control than if you just open up a designated public forum. Then you have to let everyone come and say essentially whatever they want to say. So, in the resolution last year, and reaffirmed in the resolution before you tonight, it reaffirms that this is the speech of the city of Wilmington, as evidenced by the fact that the original monument was modified at the request of the city to include four words, not just three.
So it's, it, it would need, since it's, okay, let's, let's suppose, you know, we have elections, we have different council, that would, who, who determines the, this, the government speech, the council?
The council.
So it's something that would, unless we change what it is, would be voted on basically every time a council changes, every year?
A, a pre, or, excuse me, a subsequent council stands on the shoulders of the previous council, they can vote to change the speech of the city, and I think you can certainly see that has taken place over the years, but until they vote to change it, then it is the speech of the city.
And it, it was set up for a year, so is that, so all we're doing tonight is just extending, it's a year extension, basically?
It's a simple extension, nothing more.
Thank you.
Rabinbark?
I knew when we passed this last year that would not be the end of it, and I fully expect it to come back every year. It'll never go away. I was against it then, and I'm against it tonight. I don't think it's as uniting as you think it is, I think it's more divisive. It just is.
So, McGrady?
Well, I have to tell you, I really like it. I wasn't sure when I saw the pictures a year ago, but he said, okay, let's put it up. And now, I think it's so uplifting. It's bright, it's, it lifts the spirit, and I think it's a great contrast to the more somber memorial we have just a block away. So I'm, I'm all for keeping it up.
Mr. Barnett? Mr. Barnett?
I am for, I am for the extension, and my reasons for the extension, similar to what Kevin has said, there's still a lot of work that we need to do as a city, as people, and I think that there is still a number of issues that we have to just address. We have to address, and we have to address them civilly, we have to address them so that we can make Wilmington the city that our grandchildren would love to live in.
Okay.
So I'm definitely in favor of it.
Any other questions, comments? Ready to vote? We have a motion to approve, we have a motion by Councilmember Spears, second by Councilmember McGrady. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item passes five to two. That brings us to our next item business, which is items RP one, which is council's appointments committees for boards and commissions, and Mayor Pro Tem Margaret Haynes, chair under that committee, will give a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while I chair that committee, I would like to remind everyone that Mr. Rivenbar and Mr. McGrady also serve on the appointments committee, and we have a number of suggestions this evening. Number one is the Municipal Service District, known as the MSD Advisory Committee, and the recommendation is to appoint a Mr. Chris Clark for a term that expires July one, twenty-twenty-four. Secondly, we have the Joint Commission, it's a Wilmington and New Hanover County Commission for Women. The recommendation is to appoint Ms. Katie Griswold for a term that expires five nineteen, twenty-twenty-two. Next is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have two people that are eligible for reappointment, William Bordeaux, his term would expire August twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, and the other reappointment would be Zach Gilbert for a term which expires July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Then we have the Planning Commission. The recommendation is to reappoint J.C. Lyle for a term that expires August first, twenty-twenty-four. Next, we have the Joint New Hanover County City Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, and the recommendation this evening is to reappoint Eric Knight for a term that expires August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, to reappoint Katrina Knight for a term that expires August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, and to also reappoint Katrina Redman for a term that expires August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. And then lastly, we have a recommendation for the Zoning Board of Adjustment to appoint a Mr. Scott Monroe for a term that expires four fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. And with that, I will make a motion asking for the, no, I got it, it's, we're not doing harm. Thank you. So I made the motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
This concludes the regular agenda. Are there any items to be brought forward by our city attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank council for appointing such an able and excellent city manager for me to work with.
Thank you. City manager?
I'll pay you later, Mr. Attorney. No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk? Mr. McGrady?
Stay healthy, wear your masks, keep your distance, it's not over.
Mr. Barnett?
Yeah, again, wear your mask, and on my way here, my daughter had one of those, like, great moments, and she said, Dad, thank you for bringing me to Wilmington. And I was just excited, because, you know, in life, you need great moments, you know? Because sometimes it gets tough with the shootings and all that kind of stuff, but you need, you need moments that remind you that this still is a great place to live. So thank you.
Thank you.
Wear your mask, wear your mask.
And Pro Tem?
Well, I'll just reinforce the mask thing, that it is a mandate, that the county commission's voted on that, and so it is an ordinance, it is the law, that when you come into any enclosed building in the county of New Hanover, you are to put on a mask at all times. So this thing is far from over, and it seems to almost be getting worse before it gets better, so we don't want to lose anybody, so please do your part and help us all stay safe and get further down the road.
Rivenbar? Mr. Anderson?
As I'm sure everyone knows, we had a tragic shooting a week ago Monday at New Hanover High School, and I watched the county and school board meeting Thursday, and I got endless amount of phone calls and email, well, not emails, texts, and I think people don't, a lot of times, know their civics, which we've all learned that over time, but I understand they're just reaching out to someone that they think is, can help. And I told them this wasn't really our jurisdiction, and tried to direct them in other places, but I also had two kids graduate from there and have a lot of friends and connections that still have kids there, so it's just kind of natural, I think, for them to reach out. And during that, that meeting with the county and the county commissioners and the school board, I thought of, you know, for such a, something to be able to that quickly and that many people in a room, it was fairly productive. I think afterwards, continue, even though I've told people, you know, talked to those, talked to those folks, what they're looking for, and I hope the county and the, and as the time goes by, will look at, everything that seemed to come out of it had a more of a long-term flavor to it, and I don't disagree with that, you know, change has to occur over the long term, but there are a lot of parents with kids there that are wanting something, you know, what about my kids today? You know, we need to have short-term goals and long-term goals, and they want to be, know that they're doing something to make the kids safer next week, next month, this year, and not just fifteen, twenty years from now. So I realize it's hard to accomplish a lot, and I don't guess that was four days, so I'm not complaining, I'm just passing that along, and hopefully, we'll see some short-term and long-term goals and, trying to think of the word, but I think you understand what I'm trying to say, so thank you.
Mr. Spears?
Yes, sir, I want to say thank you to council for supporting that resolution. I think that means a lot going forward for the city. I would also like to reiterate the mask-wearing and social distancing and washing your hands and sanitizing your hands, and what we are looking for from businesses that we enter into, you know, I've said this before, but the hand sanitizer is getting a little slack in places now, the wipes for the carts are missing, let's step it up. This thing, and this relates to everything that we've talked about tonight, what we do, this thing is bigger than us. This is, this is for generations to come, this is for the people who are around us, the people who put us in the seats, the people who stop us in the grocery stores and send the texts and make the phone calls, who have given us a vote of confidence, and we owe them to do the best job that we can, even if we don't understand, we owe them to do the best job that we can. So thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. And just one, the last thing, I just want to reiterate what Neil said, I was out at New Hanover after that shooting, and just want to compliment our Wilmington Police Department and Donnie Williams and his staff, the command staff, the people who put that together, and how fast y'all responded and got into that school to try to save lives, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of the citizens of Wilmington for protecting us and getting on the scene as quickly as you did. Thank you very much. With that, thank you for taking an interest in your government.